Seeing that it's 7 o'clock, I'll open the meeting to the Halifax zoning board of appeals for January 8th, 2018. In attendance of the full members of the board, six. Just so everybody in the audience knows, the meetings are being recorded and that you just have to know that. All right, let's start off. What do we have here? Minutes from December 11th. Anybody have a chance to read through these? I read through them quick, I didn't see anything. Any changes, deletions, corrections? I skimmed it quick, I didn't see anything. You good?
Yeah.
I'll accept the motion to accept the minutes for December 11th, 2017.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of December 11th, 2017?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. All right, correspondence and email. Planning board, scheduled, 2018 meeting schedule. Oh, you have a gift. Okay. All right, good. This will be on file, case any members of the board need to refer this. Be good to have. Where do they meet? Twice a month, is that how they do it?
Yes.
Good. Awesome. Thank you. Town clerk memo. From 11/16/2017. Ethics tests and forms to all municipal employees, board members, committee members, elected officials, Charlie Sealy slash Barbara Gaynor regarding ethics conflict of interest, July 4th. Basically it's telling us we have to have these done. I think it's periodically, is it every two years, every three years? Whatever it is. We're due. So you can take the test online. It's pretty simple and I think you've all taken it at one point. And we'll need a copy. Will be furnished down with the town clerk. Print name, signature. If you've taken it already this year, I don't know if anybody has, then we need to go online. You'll see at the end of it, you'll check off a box. For those that haven't done it before, copy for a certificate and it makes a copy with your name on it and you can fill it out or you'll put zoning board of appeals Halifax, Mass. and then your name and then we'll just turn that into the clerk's office. All right? Okay, what's our next one? Planning board memo. Site plan review, Pope's Tavern.
It's here and I don't know if you want to pull it off until you actually get to that.
All right, I just want to take a quick look at it and see. Oh, they're just asking us for our input?
Yeah.
They haven't reviewed it or had any decision on it, I'd say?
They have not because their meeting was canceled last week.
Oh, we got to read it. Okay, planning board memo. Charlie Sealy memo, proposed zoning changes, discussion. To the planning board, zoning board, building inspector, board of health, Charlie Sealy, town administrator, December 20th, 2017, proposed changes. The board of selectmen met with members of the various boards and other town officials on September 26th, 2017 about various possible zoning amendments in the following areas: live entertainment events, affordable housing, multifamily housing, abandoned use slash non-conforming arts slash residential development. The selectmen have scheduled another meeting for January 23rd at 8:30 PM to continue the discussion on these topics with the hope that the town boards and officials can reach a consensus on possible amendments to the zoning bylaws to be presented at the annual town meeting in May or failing that, what individual boards and officials might present to town meeting. If your board or department has developed any proposals in the interim, please send copies to the board of selectmen and I'll distribute them. We had some that we had discussed with them, we had met with the selectmen. So is Velma Segal here?
Yes.
Oh, good. Good, I was stalling.
I get out at 6:30 in Brockton.
Oh, she said you might be a little late, so that's why I thought.
Yeah.
Okay, let's see, and it's petition, 7 o'clock, 7:05. Petition number 565, Velma Segal, 97 Circuit Street, in-law renewal. Is this one up here?
Right here, right there, when you're looking.
Okay, the form I'm currently looking at is the pre-printed form for renewal.
Yeah.
We had visited this once at a previous meeting, 97 Circuit Street in Halifax. Velma Segal, the questions in section two, the in-law apartment information, please answer questions below accurately. Note if you answer no to any of the questions from section two, you must explain in writing for the reason. Please answer only yes or no. The owner, first one, the owner, continued to occupy either the principal residence or the in-law apartment. The answer was yes. Second, the principal resident in the in-law apartment continued to share major utilities as stated in original decision letter. The major utilities continue to be. The answer was yes. They do share the major utilities. Question three, there have been no changes made to the in-law apartment since the last renewal and/or the original granting of the original special permit. The answer is yes, there have been no changes. Here's where we ran into the problem, the last one, last question. The person who are related to the owner occupants of the existing single-family dwelling is related either by blood or marriage. And you answered no. Extended family is what was put onto it. So the board, after reading the form, in order to comply with the requirements of an in-law apartment, it's supposed to be by blood or marriage, the person occupying the in-law. And you put extended family and we did not know actually what that entailed.
Okay, a lot of my family died. A lot of it was drugs. My husband died from old age, you know, he got very sick and he died. My daughter occupied that premises previous to that and she died.
Occupied the in-law?
No.
No, the main house?
The house.
Okay.
She destroyed it. Drugs and a lot of drug people coming in and out of it. These people, I've known her entire life, I've known her friend who lives there too. They've come in and taken a house that was in shambles and redid it and made it into a home again.
Were you still living in the in-law?
No, I'm living in the in-law.
That's what it said.
They live in the four-bedroom.
But you were still occupying the in-law?
I still occupy the in-law.
Okay.
I had a grandson who lived on the premises and he died of heroin. I have another grandson that wants to return to the property and he's 19, he's in West Virginia. And I told him, all of your education, your four years of high school are in that area and he can't complete it, he can't seem to get that education. But I told him he couldn't come until he got a diploma or a GED and within the next two or three weeks, I think he will have a GED and he will return to the property. He can't get jobs down there, he could here easily. But, and I have grandchildren that I don't see at the moment because of all of the issues that I've had. I've had like four deaths in the family. I've had lost four brothers also, not, I mean, two children, a grandson and a husband. I lost four brothers and I've lost a sister.
Is the grandson from down south?
No, the one that died here lived with me.
Yes, but the one that's moving up, that you would like to occupy?
Yeah.
The house?
A part of the house, yes.
So is it, my understanding is now that the girl that's living in the main house right now?
She's okay with it.
She's there, but she's there temporarily by herself until the grandson?
No, she's not temporary.
Well, how does the house?
She helps some, but not a lot. She doesn't work at the moment, she's trying to get custody.
You own the house?
I own the house and I pay all the bills.
And you live in the in-law?
But I do charge them something to help me.
You live in the in-law?
I live in the in-law.
So when your grandson comes back, he's going to live in the main house?
There'll be a room over there. There's four bedrooms over there and one on my side.
So there would be, when he comes up, there will be a blood relative living at the house?
Yeah. And that's fine with her. She's, they've known each other their entire lives, they get along great and he's a good kid.
I know, I know.
The in-law is what we're worried about. She lives in the in-law.
Yeah, that's fine, according to the rule, that's okay for her.
According to the rule.
So the owner of the house can live in the in-law?
Right. You live in the in-law?
I live in the in-law.
Right.
And I should continue that, you know, until something happens to me or until I sell it, but I don't plan on selling it in the near future.
So when will your grandson be arriving here?
It depends. He, very narrow margin, by like five points, he lost it, he didn't get his GED and I won't let him come without that as part of him working and I will put him in, he wants to be a plumber. I will put him in school or something to help him further, some education, to get a better job. He's 19, he's a really good kid, he's really sweet, he's wonderful.
So will he be here within a month, two?
I think, he said sometime in January they were doing the testing again and I think that he will pass it, he's anxious to get up here.
Yeah, we missed it by a couple. So what we have, I guess, is a situation where it's temporarily being occupied by a non-immediate family member.
But they will stay, they, I mean, I've known her her whole life.
Hold on a second.
Okay.
So, and by the end of the month, there will be a, more than likely, a immediate family member occupying the house.
But she is...
But the owner of the house is still on the in-law.
That's what the in-law was.
Which complies with our zoning requirement.
The person living in the house now is paying some sort of rent?
Just 500 a month, that's to help me get, it was what I would have been missing if my husband hadn't died in the nursing home, you know, I would have needed that, that was our original arrangement, but she, I do pay all the supplies to fix the house. She's done amazing work. Her dad is a carpenter and he showed me the tricks of the trade and amazing work. And the house was totally trashed.
Do you have meals together or is it completely separate?
I have a door in between that I can lock it, like if I choose. I know that's not against the rules, but I need my privacy.
That's kind of exactly what the bylaws there to not do, which is why we're having, I'm having such a tough time with that.
But before, when my family was living there, I needed those locks also because they would come in and there was a lot of stealing, credit cards and checks and...
There's not supposed to be a door at all, it's a shared living space.
There's supposed to be what they call shared living space, that between the in-law and the main house. So if, we're trying to make, get the property in compliance with the zoning law to help this out. Any other questions from the board? How does the board feel?
I think we wait until February, see if they...
We've already continued this once, yeah.
When does it expire?
It expired last month.
It expired last month.
It's a, and I don't know, because a lot of time goes by and people come up and if, like if the situation was presented to us, I think from where you're at right now as a new in-law apartment, I don't think I would be able to, according to the bylaw.
Well, I do have a lock on the door if I go shower, but it is 99% of the time it's open.
What we're saying is it's supposed to be shared living space, it's not supposed to be a door period. It's supposed to be able, you know, it's in-law, it's immediate family members is what the bylaws say.
I need it to do so.
So there's supposed to be access, easy going back and forth.
There is, but 99% of the time there is.
Any other comments, questions?
Because that is an exit for them also.
What about as a board, if we postponed...
It's a good...
Postpone the application, withdraw the application until next month because it's gone over the 90 days. So they'd have to withdraw without prejudice until...
Is there an immediate family member that could live in that now, in that house right now until the nephew or the...
In the main house, you mean?
In the main house until the grandson?
Everybody that was in this area has died.
Do you have anybody that would temporarily occupy in the main house temporary until your grandson comes back?
Till he comes here. Everybody died. My, I had a daughter who died, a son who died, a husband who died, grandchildren who were taken to Arizona, grandchildren who were, or other grandchildren who were in West Virginia. My daughter, I cannot allow her back in the house because her husband destroyed a lot of things in my life.
Well, sorry for your losses, but we're trying to help you out.
I know, but no.
To get somebody in the house until your grandson comes back.
Immediate family, there is none here, no. I'm from out of state, I was born and raised in West Virginia. That's where my daughter, her husband and kids are. They can't come back to the house because I won't allow them.
What do you think?
I'm just trying to think of some way now.
Exactly, that's it.
They're pushing a lot of...
They all died, I mean, four people in my life.
It's only 30 days, right? It expired, it expired last month?
You have a water key, they also tested, I mean, these aren't very testing.
Because the, so the, from my perspective, I'm not speaking for anybody else, but from my perspective, the issue is the town in its bylaws voted because they don't want people to have multifamily setups like that.
Yes, that's true, but, I mean, I've lived with this girl who lives here, I've lived in their house, they've lived in my house in Brockton.
But that's not what the bylaws says.
Yeah, and we said no taxes.
We don't know what the bylaws says.
It's more family, it's more family than not family. They treat me exactly, they're not blood, but they do treat me like I am, always.
Is there a kitchen in the in-law? Is there a kitchen in the in-law?
Yeah.
That's one of the main houses?
Yeah.
If we withdraw the application, she has a...
I would suggest that the applicant withdraw the, her application without prejudice, in which case...
But she no longer has a current in-law?
It's expired, right. It's expired right now as we speak anyway. And in order, time in order to change her status as far as fulfilling the requirements of the in-law apartment. I don't know what else we could do. Anybody else have? I'll take any other suggestion or recommendation.
How do we do this here?
I think it should be approved because I live there, I live in the in-law.
No, we understand that, but we have set rules that we have to go by. And every time we deviate or if we do deviate from it, then anyone can do it. And there's no rules. And I understand you, believe me, we're trying to do the best for you right now, we're trying to think of a way to do it, but you know, our hands are kind of tied, so we're trying to work it.
Before, when the whole street was against it, it was because of all of my son loss and iniquities. He's not coming back to my home, I will not allow that. I mean, that can't happen. And that's the family. That's what's left. But his children can.
Yes.
Do we have note letters or anything on file regarding any objections to...
I also have a 16-year...
Let me just check some papers.
I also have a 16-year-old grandson who is absolutely wonderful, he's a gold four-point L student, he scored top in the testing.
But he's not living at the house.
But he's, he has told me repeatedly, I am coming back to you when I'm 18. And he's 16 and a half now.
I mean, he has...
We would...
There's multiple issues here.
There's huge, yes, there is.
All right, and so I think we need to either detail the remedies along with postponing it, because postponing it and having...
Come back with the same.
She may not be aware of all the problems. I think we need to do something or give her direction along with what you're asking her to do.
All right.
That way when she comes back, we can...
Should be able to meet the criteria, knowing the exact criteria she has to meet in...
Because there's multiple things here that we're trying to figure out.
No, because it took place in December.
All right, that would be my best recommendation would we, we would need a letter from the petitioner, Mrs. Segal, to her request to withdraw the application without prejudice until our next meeting, either February or March, where we can get her on there. In the meantime, can you help her do that, draft a note, because she has to sign it and date it to withdraw her application?
Sure.
And also included in that is recommended by the board members that a copy of the criteria for an in-law apartment is enumerated in the zoning bylaws so that Mrs. Segal will know exactly what she has to do in order to meet the requirements of an in-law apartment. And by that time, either by February or the March meeting, she will have a better understanding of not only the criteria, but the situation with her grandchild and coming up from Kentucky and whatnot, in which case we'll revisit the application without prejudice.
Sure.
Okay, yes. Do I have that, do I have a motion in order to allow Mrs. Segal to withdraw her petition number?
Is it something she's interested in doing, does it?
Oh yeah, she probably should. Is that okay with you?
I'm a little concerned about it. I mean, I've done everything that I could, you know, and I do want to live in my place.
The issue, you can't, I don't think anybody's going to tell you that you have to leave. I think the issue is, because it's your home, the issue is largely that the people who either live in the in-law or are, so technically you might be renting, I don't know exactly where it's at. So either you're renting the house out, which I'm not sure if that's the case.
No.
But if that's the case, it would have to be a blood relative to the people renting the house, I believe, which I don't know if...
I do get money for parts of my expenses, yes.
Or the in-law needs to be a person of blood relative. Plus, on top of that, I think that it would need to meet the statutes or the bylaws that deal with the door and the opening. Can't be a door at all, let alone a locked door. So we, and I think that's kind of what people had mentioned and it's tough because I don't want to be the one to tell you all this, but the town has, like we can't really deviate from that stuff. So I think that if we had to vote on it tonight, I think we have, I would have to vote no, because it doesn't meet the requirements that the town set. So I think that what, I think people are looking to do, and I don't know, just speaking for myself, is it might be a better idea to withdraw the application for now, work and try and find ways to meet the bylaws so that we can approve it. Because I think as of now, I don't know if I would be able to vote yes on it and I don't want to put you in a really ugly spot because it seems like you've been through a tough time, so.
Yeah.
You know? Is that...
Yes.
Give me her direction, to the zoning officer? Would that be something we could do?
Absolutely, yes.
That we have the zoning officer check it out?
Meet with her.
Now you said you have, who's ever staying there, they have ability to do, fix things up?
Oh, yeah.
Doors, things like that maybe? So if you could get a list from the zoning officer of what's required, my big concern is we postpone this, well, you withdraw it, a month or two goes by and we come back and nothing's been remedied. So you need a list and we need to give her direction to get a list of remedies. So I think maybe the zoning officer?
Right, we'll provide a copy of the zoning requirements and the criteria for an in-law apartment and then...
I guess what I'm asking is would an inspection be the best way to go? So he could just say, you know, you just really need to do A, B, C and D and not look at the whole...
In the letter or with the criteria, please include the phone number, the contact number for the building inspector, the zoning enforcement agent, Mr. Rob Picarelli, to meet with the applicant in hopes to, either at the office or on site, in order to determine what is necessary for Mrs. Segal to comply with the proper in-law apartment requirements.
Basically, if I have some, my grandson in the main house and I'm still the primary person in the in-law, that's fine, right?
Yes, you own the house, your name is on the deed. Your name is always... Oh, yes, but you also have to meet the criteria that the zoning enforcement will explain to you. It's required, it's not, it's not a suggestion, it, you have to. Everybody has to, not just you, Mrs. Segal, everybody who has an in-law apartment.
I'm 68 years old, I don't want to live with 26-year-olds.
So will you help draft a letter? Yes, sure. I'd like to request to withdraw my application without prejudice. Petition number, petition number 565 at 95 Circuit Street.
And I got rid of all the drug people in the house.
Then we'll do that.
97 Circuit Street.
97 Circuit Street. Petition number 565. Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll accept a motion to accept Mrs. Segal's withdrawal of her application without prejudice for petition number 565.
I want the motion to accept a petition, application 565 without prejudice.
That's fine. Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. It's been withdrawn. And then you can meet up with this building inspector, either he can come over, explain it to you, show you what you need to do in order to comply. Thank you very much. Yeah, that's fine. And date it, that's all.
That's fine.
All right, we're moving on to petition number 871. Derek Lewis, Christopher and Kimberly Vernascone, how'd I do?
You did good.
Ah. Uh, one seventy-three Mont Ponce Street.
Okay.
Thank you very much. The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, November thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, at seven ten PM in meeting room number one of the Town Hall, four ninety-nine Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. On the petition of Derek Lewis to construct a second-story addition on an existing home located at one seventy-three Mont Ponce Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Christopher and Kimberly Bertisconi, Halifax, Mass, oh two three three eight, as shown on Assessors' map eighty-four, lot twelve, title reference book three five one three two, page six. The applicant seeks a special permit to continue and extend a pre-existing non-conforming use for a second-story addition in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under section one sixty-seven eight, A and C area is zone residential, petition number eight seven one. Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Have we got a plot plan?
I have a plot plan, and I actually have a picture of the house. This is the part that we're going up. And the reason why we want to go up is because of that bubble right there.
The bubble?
You can't walk up the stairs without hitting your head-
Okay.
-with the bubble, but I don't want to put a new bubble on.
All right.
We need a new roof, and in order to not have a bubble, we have to raise the roof up.
What's the bubble? It just-
It's, since the house is so old, as people grew, um, you hit your head going up the stairs, so they had to add the bubble, so you wouldn't-
Okay.
So if I got rid of the bubble, it would hit our heads.
All right. Okay, so I think, as we discussed, uh, the last time, uh, again, you're not, uh, increasing the footprint. You're not, um, uh, moving any closer to Mont Ponce Street than it's, uh, the pre-existing foundation is now. It's just a matter of-
Just going up.
But you understand, the board has a criteria, as you just heard, that we need to have in order, in order to make, uh, uh, a judgment on, on any petition, not just yours, it's to all petitions. And as a requirement, the plant, the plot plan was, was necessary.
It's that bubble, the thing that's killing me.
Anybody have any, uh, questions of the petitioner?
No.
Other than going up, is, if you can put another bedroom upstairs or anything like that, or?
No, we're just, um, it's just gonna raise it. There's an existing bedroom there, and then there's a kind of a walk-in closet. It's just gonna knock the wall down and make it-
So it's all living space, it's not, not a kitchen or anything?
No, 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 no.
Nothing else subdivided or anything?
I have a washer and dryer up there, so that'll just bring us up and just make that room a little bit. Like, you can stand in it now instead of-
Instead of hitting your head.
Yeah, instead of hitting your head, you can now stand in the laundry room, basically.
Well, uh, what I would do, I know where this was postponed in the last meeting. I, I know myself personally have had an opportunity to drive by the property. So, uh, I don't know if anybody else being familiar with it, what I'm getting is, is, uh, if anybody else would like to make a motion in order to waive the onsite. I would accept a, a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive the onsite.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, voting on this, by the way, is Kasiah, Peter, myself, Bob, and, and Jerry. And we appreciate your input, Dan. Uh, but, uh, I'll take a vote on, uh, on waiving the onsite. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Motion passes to waive the onsite, five zero to zero. Okay, anybody else have any, uh, questions or, or comments regarding the property? I know this has been kind of, we, we have discussed this in, in length in the past. But if anybody else has any more questions of the petitioner? All right, then, uh, I will accept a, a motion regarding, uh, petition number eight seventy-one.
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, petition number eight seventy-one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any comments, contingencies, anything else, uh, additions or deletions? Okay, uh, all those in favor of accepting, uh, the petition as, as applied, please say aye.
Aye.
Matt, uh, the motion passes. Then the petition is granted, five zero to zero. I want to explain to you how, uh, there's a thirty-day wait. It has to be registered down with the town clerk and all that. You're all good?
Do I get a copy of the?
Uh, sure. Did you give her one yet? Actually, we only really need one, you can give her the rest.
You can hang them on the rooms.
Exactly. I have to search for these, keep them. I might just hang them everywhere. Thank you. So I'm all set, and I just wait for this, and then I'm good to go when the report starts?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Just give her a call tomorrow, and they'll let you know when, uh, all the dates and all that fun stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I thought, yeah, we do need it. Oh, no, not with them. She withdrew, she withdrew without prejudice. So we'll go with that. All right, we're ready. Yeah, seven fifteen, how we doing?
Good, how are you?
That's good.
All right.
Petition number, uh, eight seventy-two. Yes, this is. Okay, the Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public meeting on Monday, January eighth, two thousand eighteen, at seven fifteen PM in meeting room number one of the Town Hall, four ninety-nine Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. On the application by Todd Taylor to construct a three-car garage to be located at forty-six Mont Ponce Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Todd Taylor, Halifax, Mass, oh two three three eight, as shown on Assessors' map, uh, ninety-five, lot one H, title reference book three one four three one, page fifty-nine. The applicant seeks a special permit to build a thirty-two-by-forty, twelve-hundred-and-eighty-square-foot three-car garage with a second floor for storage use in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under section one sixty-seven twelve F, sections four and five, area is zone residential, uh, petition number eight seven two. Mr. Taylor? How are you? Would you like to speak to your petition? What are we doing?
Um, I just, uh, would like to have that special permit to build this garage to keep my, um, some toys that I have in storage, basically. And, uh, that's it.
Forty-six one Ponce, where are you?
Forty-six one Ponce, it's the second house coming in from Plimpton on fifty-eight.
So it's on the right or the left, on the right?
On the right. It'll be the second to the last house before you drop into Plimpton by Edith Edison there, Easton Edison.
All right.
Fifty-eight, yep.
How big a lot are we talking? About two acres?
Little, yep.
A little over?
Yep, yep. And that plot plan you see is shortened to fit on that page.
Okay, but the, but the dimensions are correct.
Yep, all my setbacks are in order, yep.
Okay. How about use? What is, what is the garage gonna be used for?
Um, to keep, it's, to keep my stuff in, my trucks, cars, I have some toys. I have some things-
Commercial use at all?
No.
Working on any kind of cars outside of your own? Storage outside of your own, where you're receiving any kind of income for it?
Nope. Personal use only, yeah. Black and white checkered floor.
Okay, what, okay, what do you have for toys, I gotta know?
I, I just, I, I just purchased a- Well, my wife here would like to use a, a garage to park her car in.
What?
I have a, uh, I have an O-six F-three-fifty, crew cab, diesel. It's never been out in the bad weather. I have that, and I have a nice branding tractor I just purchased to do some of the side work with. And there's a one-bays for lawnmower, stuff like that. Possibly something in the near future.
How, how big is this now, Mr. Taylor?
What's that?
Thirty-two by-
Thirty-two by forty.
Uh, what about the, uh, second floor? What's going upstairs?
Storage. My current house I have, this doesn't have- No, it's just gonna be, there's gonna be a set of stairs, you know, to a landing and then up. It's just gonna be for storage. The house that I have now, that I live in, there's no storage in it, it's all finished. You know, underneath's finished, it's a walkout-type home, there's no basement.
How about, uh, plumbing, electric, heated?
There will be electric and there will be heated, yes. No plumbing.
No, no sink? No toilet facilities?
There'll be no water in that building, no.
No water at all?
No, no.
How you gonna wash the truck?
Just right here. It's not gonna get dirty, I hope. It gets washed maybe once or twice a year, it doesn't get dirty, so.
Anybody else have any other questions from the board?
Have you spoken to your butters?
And there'll be a little refrigerator in there too, with some beverage, so if you ever want to stop by. Yes, Graham Rogers is one of my butters, and-
Who is?
Graham Rogers? Yeah, and Tim Hasham owns the house next to me. He rents it to, to a couple over there. It's, um, likes development.
Have you said contact with him?
I did, Graham Rogers knows I'm doing it, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you get any feedback from him?
Um-
Positive, negative?
Positive, he was fine, yeah. Yeah, yeah. John Makepeace, you know, he's, he's not a problem. Those are the only three butters I have. The building's gonna be built right on grade. The way this lot is made, it's, they, John took off everything before they built the house. So the house is actually built on existing grade, and then they fill in around it. So the, the actual garage is gonna be within a foot of existing grade, the foundation. It's only a five-foot, six-foot wall. So, and then there'll be, it'll be filled and graded accordingly around it.
How's that gonna affect your, uh?
It's not gonna affect the, the septic system at all.
The leaching field's going right in front of the garage, right?
It's, it's a two-inch pipe.
That's it?
That's it, it's a pump system. It's a, we have-
What's pumped in?
Yeah, that's a pump line from a pump tank that goes all the way out back. Yeah, that's all that is, it's not a natural, uh, leaching field, it is a raised bed.
Have you spoken with the building inspector, the zoning enforcement agent regarding this? I see his letter is included in the-
Yeah, yeah, and I've already met with the building inspector and-
How big is the house?
The house that's on the property, it's, it's about eighty square feet smaller than that garage. The square footage, the actual foot plan, but the living space is twenty-four hundred square feet if you count all the floors. And if I finish the third floor, we'll even have more space.
Well, for, uh-
The actual house is on there, isn't it, on the plot plan? It's, uh, forty by thirty-two by twenty-eight?
The dimensions of the house, huh?
Yeah. It's forty feet wide, thirty-two feet down one side where the dump out is, and twenty, twenty-eight feet on the other side. So it's eighty feet smaller than the, the footprint of the garage.
It's a ranch?
No, it's a colonial.
Colonial.
Yeah, it's four stories to the attic. It's a, it's a big house. It's a walkout, it's not, um-
So how many square feet does that make?
Uh, it's, it's roughly around twenty-four hundred square feet of living space in it right now.
Round floor here.
Yeah.
But it's calculated by the first floor living?
Yeah, they just do it by the footprint, right?
Right, exactly.
And it'll be finished just like the house, green siding, white trim, white insulated doors. It's not gonna be an eyesore or anything like that.
Anybody have any other questions?
How high are the garage doors gonna be?
Nine by nine. Nine feet wide, nine feet tall.
Do the butters need to be notified in writing, just so we have a-
Do your butters have?
They have been notified, they all got certified.
Oh, it wasn't just for a-
No, 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 it was all-
Well, I was just asking if you spoke with them.
Well, yeah, Graham's gonna probably haul in the material I need from, from John Makepeace's property. John's doing a project out there now, making a new reservoir. And I'm probably gonna be getting some of that, that fill. And I don't know if you, do you guys know Graham Rogers? Is that why you were asking, or do you know Graham? Yeah. He's got three trucks running now.
Anybody else have any other comments regarding this property or anything? Uh, what is the pleasure of the board? Anybody wanna go up, look at this?
Yeah, nothing to see you.
I'll call you when it's done, and then you can come and see it.
I want to make a motion to waive the onsite.
I'll second.
There's been a motion made in, uh, seconding to, uh, waive the onsite on the petition number eight seventy-two. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero to zero. Basically, that just saved you a month.
Thank you.
Anything else, uh, regarding the property that, uh, needs to be discussed or will accept a motion on eight seventy-two?
I'll make a motion to accept petition eight seventy-two.
As presented?
As presented. Any stipulations?
Yes, any contingencies of, uh, regarding, uh, use or anything like that? It's, uh, you understand, you, you applied and have said to the board that there will be no commercial use of the, of the, of the structure on the property. So any deviation with that, you'd have to come back to the board.
Absolutely, absolutely, there'll be no commercial use.
Is that suffice?
No. Believe me, I wouldn't do that, it's, it's not what it's for.
Okay, did, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we'll take a voice, voice vote regarding petition number eight seventy-two. Kasiah?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
I vote yes?
Yes.
Jerry? Uh, passes eight, uh, five zero to zero. We'll submit the paperwork down to the court's office, you'll call down there. You'll get a, a letter from the board after someone, you have to bring it to the registry at Dean's and register your special permit, you'll explain the whole process.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So, would you like my wife?
Don't pass it, don't pass it.
I know, I can't get in the existing class, because he has too much stuff.
Thank you. Sorry for all the information.
No problem. All right, bring the next crew in. Let me read this. Let me read this. Okay, seeing that it's pretty close to quarter of eight, the Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, January eighth, two thousand eighteen, at seven thirty in meeting room number one of the Town Hall, four ninety-nine Plymouth Street in Halifax, Mass. On the application by the town of Halifax to construct an addition to Pope's Tavern to be located at five oh six Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by the town of Halifax in Halifax, Mass, oh two three three eight, as shown on Assessors' map seventy-two, lot eighteen, title reference book number four seven two four, page four oh three. The applicant seeks a special permit to continue and extend a pre-existing non-conforming use for an addition and renovation in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under section one sixty-seven eight, sections A, B, and C, and a variance from the front setback on South Street from fifty feet to sixteen feet in eleven inch, in eleven inches, according to the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under sections one sixty-seven eleven, table of dimensional and density regulations. The use is permitted by right under chapter one sixty-seven dash two, area is zone residential, petition number eight seven three. Uh, who's speaking? Mr. Campbell, how are you? Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, I have to explain some, a couple of things as, as representing the, uh, the petition. According to the, uh, uh, conflict of interest laws, Jerry and myself have to recuse ourselves from, from the, from this meeting. Uh, Mr. Nezarella will be, uh, will be taken- Uh, Mr. Nazarella will be, uh, will be taking chair of the, uh, of your petition. Also, uh, under a special permit and a variance, you'll be required, the application will be required to get a, uh, uh, four votes in the affirmative, which means Dan, who will be taking our place, Bob, Peter, and Kasaya are the four members that will be voting on it, and they need four votes in the affirmative in order to obtain a special permit. At this time, uh, myself, I'll, uh, I'll reclose myself and turn the meeting over to Mr. Nazarella. And, uh. It's all yours. Yeah, I did.
What are we trying to do over here?
You see the plans there? Basically, um, that's the concept right there. This is the building, uh, South Street here, it's coming out. The existing building is right along here. The new addition that we hope to draw in would be exactly in line as the old building. And that's seventeen feet from the street.
So you're asking for the sudden?
We're asking to replace this building and to be right in line here because there's not enough room on the property to really deal with it elsewhere.
What's gonna be in this building?
That's basically gonna be a big room. The elevator's gonna be in, in there, and there'll be a second floor on there with a smaller room.
It's gonna be the elevation of the main building? And it's gonna have everything like the plumbing heating is.
Plumbing heating, right, this little jaw here, that's gonna be the kitchen. And we had the kitchen over here, but moved it over here because it was too close. So that's the kitchen, the elevator's right here, and there's stairs going upstairs besides the elevator, and the emergency door for the second, for the big, it's basically a big room for, uh, for the whole town really, to use for a banquet or a big meeting or anything like that.
Thirty-nine by twenty-four?
Yeah, yes.
Kitchen?
The kitchen, with the elevator, back doorway, stairs, going upstairs, they'll have a full cellar also. Want to see a second floor?
Sure.
That's the base. And that's the second floor. As you can see, the room on the second floor became long and narrow because of the pitch of the roof, like a cake house.
And this is gonna be for?
That'd be a meeting room, something to publicize about this room here.
Any questions from the board?
Can you see the exterior drawings?
Is this looking from South Street or from?
That's looking from the police station, the old police station site.
Okay, so South Street's on the opposite side?
South Street's on the opposite side, yeah.
Do you have any other elevations or?
I don't think I do. Maybe it's all. Uh, maybe, maybe they're not far enough. There's the South Street side.
It seems like all it is is just increasing.
Increase in non-conforming.
That's existed for.
That's not getting closer to the road.
It's not gonna get closer, it's exactly the same as what's there now.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I have, yeah, just in regards to the petition itself, because it has two frontages, it, uh, to meet the requirements necessary for a special permit or a variance, it is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, and because of the two frontages, both on South Street and on Plymouth Street, you're limited as regards to the topography of the property for the increase in parking space where it drops down. We are limited where the, uh, where the septic system would go and, uh, and also the parking up top in order to meet the requirements of the square footage. It doesn't, uh, believe it, it doesn't derogate from the intent of the bylaw or interfere with the established character of the neighborhood. It's been pre-existing on that site for a gazillion years, and, uh, and, uh, and therefore I think in rightly, it does meet the requirements of a special permit or a variance.
So parking on the South Street side is gonna stay?
There's basically none on South Street side.
With it, when you will go into South from the south?
This, this.
This way here?
This would stay here. Right, and actually we need a variance for by law.
Yes, for the number of parking spaces.
Yeah.
And due to the topography, you're limited to where you could put it, so it does create, the topography itself does create the hardship.
Yeah, the only two, there's two driveways will remain, one off of South Street and one off of Poono Street.
Motion to waive the onsite. Go, motion to waive the onsite. Uh, I'll make a motion to waive the onsite inspection.
I'll second.
Want to make a motion?
Yeah, I don't remember anyone else.
Anybody want, from the audience wants to speak to this? Alright, you want to make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept petition, uh.
Eight seventy-three?
Eight seventy-three as presented.
I'll second.
All on the paper?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four to zero.
Okay. All right, was that past the pocket two?
Yes.
As I presented that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy, happy seeing you, you're a two, huh?
Thank you.
We've been fifteen years. Should be nice though.
It will.
It's time of the year.
Okay, I've unrecused myself. All right, what else do we have?
The house was built in eighteen twenty.
Well, it was.
Why, wasn't it, no? It was also exactly the same as that.
Really?
Really?
It was basically built in eighteen twenty. And it was sold with twelve hundred dollars.
Was it really?
I'll give you a fifteen.
All right, where are we on the list? What?
Bills.
You want to pay? You gotta pay him.
I have a couple extras if you'd like some.
Especially after the new year.
Yeah.
This is for? For which one?
For the X box.
I'm just the I can't. What property do you want to sign?
I can't.
Yeah. That a problem? No, you can't be the I.
That's generous, oh, y'all, that's right.
Variance application, which one is this?
It's empty there. Oh, is that the?
All right, what else do we have on our agenda? I lost it. Oh, you have it. I lost mine. Oh, here we go, thank you. We have.
Terry and I kind of made up, um, just a sample with a new application that I was moving up on last month. Kind of like, I'm guessing, and so, so it's just a sample that you guys.
Is this it?
Take a look at. Yes.
What would the changes we put on, you guys put on?
The only changes will be those, the two inside.
The two inside?
So it was a loose piece of paper that I would just, well, copied onto this one.
Oh, so now it's a little, little packet.
And it will obviously have all of the, um, like, the normal stuff and nothing like here, which may, there'll be the letters list.
Oh, that'll be in there?
Yep. And.
We try the forms though, nothing's changed with the forms, right?
Nope, no, it has all the information on it, it's just been a neater.
One piece of paper.
Less repetitive, yes.
Another part of it, as you're looking, you can see who owns it and everything else.
I think it just looks better, it's neat. My can be blue.
It's what?
It's just my.
Okay, it is neat. Nice job, very nice job. Thank you very much. Um, petition number adds, adds in-law renewal decision letter language. Specifically, please be advised that all variance and special permits shall comply with the rules and regulations filed down Halifax.
So I printed up just like a sample decision letter. Um, we were just talking about this one sentence in there that's kind of, it just doesn't seem to apply to all petitions. So we were thinking of taking it up completely. How do you guys feel about that?
I know that that specific sentence and language is on the, uh, on the building applications. It's usually at the bottom that the applicant is hereby put on notice that they must comply with current zoning. But I see, I see no reason why, uh, adding it onto, onto the letter just strengthens the fact that it's not a matter of, uh, the board or the building inspector finding out that you don't comply with, with the rules and regulations. It's you were put on notice that you need to comply with. I don't see any problem with that. Other members have any problem with that? You guys? Good?
Good. And then this is what you asked me to write, um, last meeting. About in-law renewals.
No. And this is, I'm sorry, this is to.
So it's about the in-law renewals to change the or to amend the bylaws in the process of in-law vehicles.
Oh, yes.
So it's just kind of a draft I sent it to you in an email.
Do you guys have copies of this?
Yep.
Like, I mean, in-law, this lady that just came in front of us.
I was gonna say, because she's pulled a permit.
Yeah, all she, all she has to do is take the kitchen out.
Right.
And she can live in that house.
Exactly, and leave the doors and everything.
Yeah.
I think.
Worst case scenario, if a grandson, which I doubt he's gonna come by here. And if you give her two months, it's not gonna happen. And the only alternative we can say to her is you just gotta take the kitchen out. And you could live in that house.
Right.
Close your door and be, be happy, you know? I mean, you hate to see what, you know, the stuff that went, she had to go through.
See, she went in that direction though, that's weird.
Yeah.
Instead of having the two months go by, she knew that, you know, now, you know.
That's maybe, yeah, that was expressed.
Maybe you can explain it to her.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
You know, if she didn't, she didn't.
What's the alternative?
The alternative, if grandson doesn't come out with it, she can remove the kitchen and. It's still her house, she can.
Right.
Do the cooking or whatever, you know? A microwave would.
No, she. An applicant such as any applicant like that, I don't want to use specifics. You're just getting yourself in deeper and deeper.
Oh, I know, every time, it's like, oh my God, please stop saying words. I keep looking at it.
What's she saying there?
We would try.
Stop saying these words!
We would try and very.
You really would.
I shut and locked my door. No, 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 no! Please stop, please stop.
You gotta leave a six-foot opening there.
But I, I think if you did, she did meet with, or a person like that with similar circumstances, met with Mr. Piccarelli and said.
Yeah.
Just remove the second kitchen and then put the kitchen back if, if it changes, but the fact that, and that shouldn't be a problem because I even asked her that, do you share meals together?
Yeah, I know.
I was really trying, you know, but, uh.
She wants her privacy.
Yes, and you can't blame her for that, and I just closed and locked the door. Oh, no. Please say you didn't say that. But if, and if this woman that's living there is, is an extended family, then I don't think it would be a problem.
Fair.
You know, just having one kitchen or a shared kitchen space or whatever. Hopefully, they can work that out so they, she can comply or someone similar can comply with Mr. Piccarelli's rules and regulations regarding in-law apartments. Great, this is good.
And then I gave you guys the annual report for two thousand seventeen.
We're getting this?
We're getting this. Five, seven percent increase in our wages, just so everybody knows. Which brings us up to a grand total of zero.
It's always fun every time we.
I'll weigh the seven percent.
No, so, really?
That is, that is really great of you.
I'm gonna donate it to the town.
That's right.
Read that directly or?
What's that?
The annual report, I'm not sure, I'm just kind of.
The two, I'll read it.
It's crazy.
Just the one page, we don't have any numbers or anything, we don't?
We're in the first paragraph.
Oh, okay, I didn't know, okay. In two thousand seventeen, the zoning board of appeals heard and or rendered decisions on seven special permits, three variances, ten in-law renewals of special permits, one business renewal of special permit, and three appeals as prescribed in mass general laws, chapter forty-eight, the zoning act, and also further clarification of the town zoning bylaw. The board normally consists of five regular members and two associate members. In two thousand seventeen, the board will have ended with no changes to their members. There is a slate of five regular members and one associate member with an opening for an additional associate member. The board would welcome residents, uh, residents an opportunity to consider joining the board. Each member brings with them varying backgrounds, skills, and expertise. Our hearings are open to the public and are normally held the second Monday of each month. We continue to welcome the participation and input from the town as Halifax continues to grow. Respectfully submitted, the gang. Anybody want, do you think it's necessary for them to? No, we've had, we've opened up the membership requirement, remember we had that gentleman that was that close that?
Just gave her a bad night.
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't look like a whole lot of numbers, but those were a heck of them.
That's it, that's it. Heck, I feel like it was a lot more painful than that.
Yeah, it was.
It was, we had some ugly ones this year.
It was an awful lot of work, and, uh, I think, uh, you know, good time to end the year and start the own. It's appreciated, though, you're important and your time and everything that's put into it makes it a lot easier for myself, and we work together, I think we work together pretty well, I think it's pretty cool, you make it, make it fun. Thanks, guys and ladies. And a new addition, why aren't you in there?
Yeah.
You know, I'm here.
And then at the bottom, maybe the, uh.
In.
The website so you can listen to me.
Yeah, right, add a link.
Entertain.
No, I think you need to put that in there, please. Yes, the retirement and, yes, the new secretary is, yes, I think that should be in there.
It's kind of a big deal around here.
Okay.
I'm just saying.
All right, well, I will then.
Anybody, I mean, that's just my
Yeah, yeah, you're a part of the system, yeah.
Oh, thanks.
Is it?
It is.
No, how you doing? Seriously, I don't even know, I've never actually asked you
I was playing a little bit earlier during the build apart, but
Yeah, we all work.
Yeah. You feel comfortable going on your own stuff now?
Yeah, for the most part, I mean, I asked her
Terry's been great.
Lots of questions.
She's been a lot of help, I think, yes, and, and has been a big plus.
Training.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and it is a learning clock process, it's, it's hard to, I would imagine, you know, to say, okay, here you go, just study this book and you'll be all set. Everything is, uh, you know, uh, even tonight, I had questions, uh, regarding, I asked Charlie in fact, I didn't know that a special permit on all the variants, like, there's a difference, sometimes you need a, you need four votes, but but it has, if you needed four, like tonight needed to be a unanimous vote. And normally, which ones are majority and which ones have to be unanimous? And I was told tonight, you know, because of the, you know, Jerry and I stepping down on it. And I found that out, as I mentioned to you guys earlier, I found that out this afternoon. I didn't think there was gonna be a problem, you know, as, as I mentioned earlier, I, uh, neither Jerry or I, you know, do we have a financial interest in it, or are we abutters or in any way, shape, or form connected with it other than the fact that, uh, you know, volunteer our time for the board on, on the municipal and school buildings committee, so Jerry, I think, is gonna have room over there.
We have statues of each other, put in there, right up
From a tower there.
So, everything being covered, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
A motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.